To the candidate forum being hosted by the Leagues of Women Voters of Elgin Area and Central Kane County. My name is Patty Lackman and I am Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County, and I will be your moderator tonight. Typically, we have someone from outside of our league moderate, but since I don't have any skin in the game here, I live in Batavia and I vote in Batavia, and so I'm not voting for you guys. Sorry. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League has a long history of conducting candidate forums and is widely considered to be one of the most capable, nonpartisan organizations in that regard, providing this forum and allow citizens to become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. The League likens a candidate's forum to that of a job interview. We're happy to provide this service for the community and for the candidates. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for verifying the accuracy of statements that the candidates make in this forum. That's up to you guys. Tonight's forum is being livestreamed by BATV on their YouTube channel 1017 and will be available on both League websites and on our partisan Illinois voter guide. We have Andrew and Audrey in the back from BATV. They're amazing. They go on the road with us, and they're from Batavia. I love them. So I feel like we should always pass the hat for BATV because they're so wonderful. At this time, I would ask that you please turn off cell phones and other electronic devices. I would also ask that you refrain from applauding or in other ways demonstrating support or opposition for any of the candidates. No campaign literature may be passed out in this room, no electioneering, and feel free to put your campaign bling back on once you leave this room. Now, cards and pencils have been provided on which the audience may submit your questions. We have a couple people walking around with note cards and pencils, and if you have a question that you want to write down, raise your hand, and they'll come to you, give you a card, and then you can raise your hand again and they'll pick it up. Questions will be screened only for duplication, clarity, and appropriateness for the office being discussed. We have our question reviewers down here that will review them. Oftentimes, we get like 20 questions for the same issue, and we take something from each one of them and make it the best question ever. So your questions specifically may not be asked. Please, the forum, sorry, losing my voice here. This forum is for the candidates running for the offices of Central School District 301 Board for both four-year terms and two-year terms. All of the candidates, as you see, are together on this stage. The candidates participating will each present a one-minute introductory statement, the order determined alphabetically by last name. I've split them up four-year term and two-year term alphabetically. The questions will be asked, and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements in continuing alpha rotation will also be one minute. League of Women Voters members will keep time. They're down in front. Candidates, please notice them. When you see the stop sign, you may finish your statement, but let's not go into another paragraph. All of the candidates running for school board were invited. All of the candidates participating have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. The candidates who were invited are Mark Falk, Dornetria Hempel, Graciela Martinez, Romaniana McMahon, Scott Merkveka, PK Parak, I'm sorry, Ryan Wasson, and Michelleine Welch. Ms. Martinez and Ms. McMahon did not respond. Candidate Merkveka is out of town on business, and unfortunately, Ms. Welch is quarantined because she is ill. For two-year terms, we have Andrew Dogan and Junaid Afif. Let's begin with candidate Falk for your opening statement. You have one minute.
Good evening.
You have to share a microphone. I'm sorry.
I began serving as a Central 301 Volunteer Board of Education member over three and a half years ago. Despite numerous challenges, we've made significant progress. Managing change is never easy, but we've navigated through it together. At the start of my term, when COVID-19 pandemic hit, we quickly adapted to an unprecedented circumstance, ensuring the safety and well-being of the students, teachers, staff while maintaining a high educational standard. The administration board and teachers worked collaboratively to maintain normalcy throughout the conditions presented. Throughout the new normal, we ensured the students remained at the top of our priority list. A major milestone of our term has been the ongoing referendum discussions to right-size the district. The initiative was launched to address the growing needs of the community and the student population while maintaining necessary resources and facilities. The success of the referendum depends both on the community and numerous economic factors. Understanding these challenges in the past district referendums, we proactively began the 20 classroom expansion at the high school. By doing so, we were able to continue providing high-quality education while accommodating and expanding student body. In addition to managing the pandemic and the referendum, we successfully finalized the contract that brought the teachers' compensation in line with competing districts. Knowing our teachers' hard work and dedication to our schools, it resulted in a contract that honors their dedication and commitment to the students. Throughout my tenure, I remained level-headed and committed to considering all perspectives with an open mind. My dedication to integrity and my moral values have been steadfast, with the focus on always acting in the best interests of the central community. My time on the school board has been a journey of growth, learning, and dedication. I'm proud of the forward progress we've made up until now and the positive impact we've made on District 301.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. We'll go on to candidate Hempel, and I guess everyone will get two minutes now.
Good evening. My name is Dornetria Hempel. I've been a resident of District 301 for 18 years, and my wife and mom have two girls, a high school and middle school students. I am passionate about education and lifelong learning. I am committed to supporting the growth and success of both students and educators in our district. I am deeply invested in the community. I currently serve as the president of the Central Education Foundation, which is a non-for-profit organization that provides resources and funding district-wide to all seven schools. I am also currently a school board member, have been for the past four years, and was newly became the president of the board. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Candidate, I'm sorry, Parak?
I can introduce myself. Thank you, Patty. So, good evening, everyone. My name is PK Parak. I am a first time, it's my first time running for office for anything. I've been a resident of our community for about eight years. I moved here with my wife. We started our family here. We now have two kids, ages four and seven. And I started to get involved with our school district about two years ago when my older one entered kindergarten, and since then, I've gotten more and more involved, getting a good understanding of the issues and what challenges they're facing, and what we need to do. I'm running because I'm concerned about the recent trend in our school district, and I'm concerned about its future. I'm concerned about the district taking positions that in many instances seem to have been on the wrong side of the law. I'm concerned about millions of dollars being spent on a project that the voters voted down three times. I'm concerned about the math reading proficiency lagging other districts and math proficiency actually going down. I'm concerned about the high student-to-teacher ratios and the lack of special education resources and academic programs for kids who are advanced and for kids who want to take electives as they progress up through high school. I'm concerned about the low teacher retention, and it's lower than all the other districts in Kane County. It's lower than Chicago Public Schools. There's a lot that I'm concerned about, and I think that we need strong leadership on the board. We need a sense of urgency. We need fresh perspectives to tackle those challenges and to move our district in a positive direction. I bring to the board prior board experience. I've been a president of a board, a treasurer of a board. I'm currently the chairperson of a nonprofit that supports another school district in the Chicago area, and I also bring over 20 years of corporate experience, implementing, designing, implementing strategic plans, managing budgets up to $250 million, leading hundreds of people and motivating them, negotiating contracts, and also reporting to boards. So I have the experience of both being the executive and the person on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Wasson.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. My name is Ryan Wasson. My wife and I have lived in the area, excuse me, since 2017. We have three kids in the school districts, a first grader, a third grader, and a fifth grader. My wife and I are both really involved in the community. I coach youth sports, football for CYFL, T-ball for CDBL, and I also coach rugby for Fox Valley Rugby, and my wife also coaches softball for CEGS. My wife and I are both very passionate about youth and their growth and watching them and trying to set them up for success, and that's the main reason that I'm running. I'm passionate about the youth in our school district, about our teachers, and I just would like to support them, and I would like to continue serving in that capacity.
Thank you. Candidate Afif.
Good evening. My name is Junaid Afif. I am an incumbent. I've been serving on the board for the past three and a half years. I've lived in this district for about 13 years. All four of my children have navigated their way through this school district. My youngest is a senior, and that's one of the reasons why I'm running for the two-year term. With my youngest daughter getting ready to graduate, I don't have any active kids left in the school. But because I've served on the district, on the Board of Education for four years, I believe that there is something that's still to be contributed, and that experience is going to be important to carry over into the next two years and then still allow for new leadership to come in in 2027. I've been a wrestling coach for the Rocket Wrestling Club for several years while my sons were a part of that, and in addition to serving on the Board of Education, I volunteered for a variety of different activities to help support the community in this school district. I think the one thing that I bring from my professional life that is going to be very important in the coming two years is my legal background. I am an attorney. I've been practicing for 30 years, and just in the last several months, we've seen the importance of having that legal background to bring to bear to the work that we do. So I'm looking to be re-elected with your support, and if I am, then I will serve another two years, and then I will not seek another term.
Thank you. Candidate Dogan.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Andy Dogan. I've lived in District 301 for just about 10 years. I have a wife and a fourth-grade daughter over at Prairie View. I've been an Elgin area resident for just about my entire life. I've served on both the Park and Rec Advisory Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city. And just a couple things about me and why I'm running. I have a 27-year career to this point as an architect, and I specialize in the design and planning of public facilities and determining the why and bringing clarity to directions in which a growing public body can go with their facilities. So I hope that that experience can be brought to good use here on the board if I'm fortunate to be elected. Beyond that, my goal for running for the board is nothing more than putting student success and student outcomes above adult interests. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our first question, and we'll start with candidate Hempel. So pass that microphone back. Sorry, guys. Thank you. What would you see as your role in enhancing communication between the district and the community?
Great question. What I would see in my role as enhancing communication within the community and the district, honestly, I think it's something that's long overdue. We need to make sure that we are making sure people are informed as far as within the community of what are the different things going on. On the board, we should do a better job of explaining things to our community members so that they understand the process and why we're coming to some of the procedures that we are. We need to do the same thing within schools. As we're making decisions as board members, we need to make sure that we're collaborating as board members, but also making sure to be transparent and explaining our reasoning for doing some things. I think that's lacking today, but I think we're, I'm hopeful that we're actually going to do a better job with that going forward. We need to make sure that our community understands why we're coming to the decisions that we are and how it will better our students.
Thank you. Candidate, apparently there's like a delay in this. I'm sorry. Candidate Parak, same question.
Thank you. You asked about enhancing communication with the community and the district. Coincidentally, I made public comment at yesterday's special board meeting on this very topic and provided an example of an opportunity that's upcoming for a board decision where there has not been much engagement with the community, with impacted parents or with teachers. And I called on the board to change the way, change the operating style in the district to actually seek input from parents, from teachers, from experts, subject to that, before taking decisions and before sort of fully considering recommendations. And I gave them five examples of important issues facing our district in which it would make sense to do that. I'm hopeful with the recent changes in leadership that the board will take the recommendation and we'll see a change, but certainly if I get on the board, I will advocate for that.
Candidate Wasson. Say the question.
I think the role of a board member is, communication is paramount. The role of a board member is service, is to serve the teachers and ultimately the students, and also to serve the community members, and to work as a liaison between the community and the school district. So I think it's extremely important, and communication has to be paramount. There has to be transparency between the board and the community, and also, as one of my colleagues said, the district as well, and the administration and the teachers. And if I was elected as a board member, that would be one of my main goals, is to make sure that communication is flowing both from the board to the community, but also allowing for that feedback from the community, from teachers and from students to come to the board as well.
Thank you.
I think that the role of a board member in communicating with the community is one of an elected representative. It's something that we haven't done historically, and it's something that we need to start doing more of. As an elected member of the board, we have a responsibility to the constituents, and those constituents are all the people who are served by the district. So it's the kids, it's the parents, it's the teachers, it's the taxpayers. And so what we need to do is create opportunities so that when PK sends us information about a program, it's, there's a forum where we can respond to that and we can have a dialogue, because otherwise, it's just a one-way street where we receive information either via email or public comment, but then we don't have an opportunity to really think together.
Thank you. I agree with many of the things that my colleagues on the stage tonight have said. Just a couple other thoughts here. I am also aligned with the notion that our board needs to engage in more active and intentional listening to the community, both inside of board meetings and outside of board meetings. So creating opportunities for the board to hear the communities concerned outside of those formal board meetings, I think, is very important in addition to the public comment that we currently have. The other kind of communication that I think our district is sorely lacking in at the moment is communication from staff and administration to the board, making sure that the board has the information they need to make the best possible decisions for our students. Thank you.
Candidate Falk. Now you get to answer the question.
So enhancing communication, you know, one of the things that we had prior to the pandemic was a town hall. That gives people the opportunity to speak and for us to respond. We were in the process of making sure that the town halls are redone and put out there to the public. I, for one, am out in the community a lot, so I hear a lot about what's going on, and I'm very communicative to the administration office, which is also putting that out as well as listening to the teachers. So I think town halls are great, and I think that putting out the facts is another thing. So thank you.
You got it. You get how this works now. Okay. Next question. One role of a school board is to develop policies for the district. Are there existing policies of which you disapprove? Do you have any suggestions for new policies? Let's give this two minutes.
I actually sat down again and started rereading the board policy book, starting with Section 2, which is the organization of the board. And the board currently is not following its own policies related to Competing Act and disclosure to the public. So I think that that is something that we need to close the compliance gap on. And I have also engaged numerous times with the administration and the board over the past six months on behalf of a group of parents with gifted or otherwise advanced learners about creating new programs in the district, and our district policies are not in compliance with Illinois state law for those types of programs or best practices in surrounding school districts. So that's something that I've taken up as a cause over the past year. And I think that what we printed to is to take a look at the entire policy book and either revise it to reflect the board's practices in compliance with law or to fill in the gaps in comparison of what other schools do.
I'm still learning a lot about the school district and about policies. There are any policies right now that come to my mind that I don't approve of at the school or within the district. What I would say, and kind of going back to what we talked about a little bit earlier, I would like to see some policies put in place that allow for our teachers to be able to come forward and talk about struggles that they might be having in their classrooms or things that they need without any fear of anyone looking at them in a negative light. So I don't know how that would work, but it would be nice to have a way where teachers who are in the classrooms with our students, who know the daily struggles that our students have, and who are going to be our best resource to find out how to fix that. I would like to have something in place where those teachers can have an open conversation with board members, with administrators about what they need and ideas on how we can help them.
I think that more than new policies, we need a better effort at understanding the existing ones. And so one example is that there's a set of policies that read together, tell us that we can have those dialogues with our teachers, with the administrators, with the parents, but they've been misinterpreted up until now to say that we can't do those things. And so reinterpreting those in light of a more thoughtful approach that takes not just board policy, but the school code and constitutional law together allows us to actually do the right thing in terms of that communication and that dialogue. In the area where we do need possibly to add a policy is that we need, on either an annual or biannual basis, to be doing some type of surveying of the district from an outside party that can come in and then give those teachers an opportunity to speak about what it is that's concerning them, but then do it in a way that's safe for them. Give the parents and the students and the community members, and indeed the administrators at the buildings, an opportunity to also weigh in. And that needs to be at the level of policy so that we know that it will be done on a consistent basis. And what that will do is it will give us data about what's happening in the school district so that we can make better decisions.
Thank you. Once again, I agree with a lot of what I've heard from the other candidates so far. Two policies or perhaps practices that I personally would like to see changed as soon as possible. One has to do with the district's recognition or perhaps lack of recognition of master's degrees from our teachers. It is my understanding at the moment that unless a master's degree, excuse me, a bachelor's degree is in education, that a master's, subsequent master's degree will not be recognized. This puts us in an incredible disadvantage to other districts that have differing policies in master's degree recognition in terms of just retaining and attracting the best and the best possible teachers. The other, I would say, practice or policy that I would specifically like to see stop is that of engaging the district's consultants and vendors in overarching master agreements. This is what happened with the high school. There was no new separate contract drawn for the architect to put that project together. It was difficult for the community to understand what their contract or role specifically was. So I would propose a new policy or at least practice that every single professional service, even with a repeat service provider, would be subject to an entirely new agreement that goes before the board for a vote and approval. Thank you.
On the way down, Didiya.
Thank you. And we review the policies at the board as often as we can or if there's needing to be a change. So those policies are reviewed and they are looked at. As far as the policies regarding master's degrees, you know, those are, those are something that if it's in their area of focus, we do support, but if someone's going to do a master's degree outside of that area, that's where, you know, the look goes deeper. So we do do that, and we also analyze policies and review them consistently with the admin. So those are done.
Thank you.
I would say that I don't disagree with the fact that we need to look at our policies a little further. That's something that Jay and I are actually doing right now. I don't disagree that there is something to be said about looking over things, making sure that they are up to date. I wouldn't necessarily agree with that we're out of compliance or that we are going against state law, but I will say that I think some of our policies could be enhanced. I would further go on to say that I think that we may want to explain our policies a little better to the public so that there's a better understanding of why some of the policies are in place and what they mean. Even further from that, I would say that with us getting a new interim superintendent in soon, that we will have another cursory look at some of these things, on what our district's been doing, what are the things they've been seeing from other districts that will kind of help with this process of looking into how things can be different. So I am definitely hopeful with that, that we will see some policy changes or more so enhancements, but I am definitely a proponent of, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say that we should always say this is how we've always done it. I think it's going to be very important to look at some of the things that we're doing and possibly make some changes and be open to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Kind of on the same line of what you just touched on. What steps will you take to support and retain all any educators?
Really good question. I think that goes back to, again, open communication and open dialogue with our teachers. I think that we need to sit down with them and have, like my colleague said, have some sort of open forum where we can sit and listen to what they have to say. I know that they have a lot of concerns. I know that they have a lot of really good ideas. Again, they're the ones that are in the classroom every day with our kids. They're the ones that know our kids the best. They're the ones that know the struggles that they're having, and I think that would be the biggest step and the biggest thing that would be a proponent for is to have that open dialogue between the teachers, between the administration, so that we can actually hear what we need to do to fix things. And then we need to go out and fix those things. We need to hold ourselves accountable and the administration accountable to not only listen to all the issues that the teachers might bring before us, but actually sit down and come up with really good goals and really good ideas to how to fix those issues, and then hold ourselves accountable to fix those.
I think that most people, myself included, would agree that despite any challenges that the school district has experienced, any of the problems that we've encountered, one area that's always consistent is the quality of our teachers. I've had four kids go through the school system, and we have always, always been very, very satisfied with the excellent teachers that they've had. So how do we make sure that we improve our retention rate? That's where we've got to have that dialogue with our teachers to understand what it is that's keeping them from staying here longer, why we can make, how we can change this district from being a stepping stone to being a place where people want to come and stay for the long haul. And to do that, we've got to talk to them and find out. Is it the master's degrees issues? Is it the Is it the culture? Is it the way that they're treated or how they're respected or not respected? Is it, you know, remuneration? Is it the pay and the benefits that they're getting? Those are the things that we've got to address. And you do that with that open line of communication. But for so long, we've heard from the CEA, the teachers are afraid to come forward and speak their minds. So we've got to find vehicles to give them that opportunity to speak their mind because we, as a Board, whomever gets elected, can't make those decisions on how to improve retention if we don't actually know what the root cause of the lack or the low level of retention really is. We can surmise that it's this, that, or the other, but for us to make good decisions, we should have accurate data and that communication is how we're going to get that.
Thank you. A few other thoughts that I would add here in addition to the need for just really great open lines of communication. I think teacher retention just starts with very simple conversations that ask our teachers, what do you need? How can we support you? And then, as candidate Watson said, living that as a Board and holding ourselves accountable to make sure that whatever those issues may be are things that they see us addressing. Mr. Afif is entirely correct. We have wonderful teachers here in the district. They are truly the greatest asset that we have here and they are responsible for the success of our students. We need to support them better and that starts with listening and that supports, that continues with our teachers feeling heard, feeling seen, and seeing the Board step up and be accountable to do what we can to make them successful. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a lot of great teachers in our district and longevity is certainly there. As far as the retention goes, you know, people move in and out and whatnot. But one of the things I will speak to is recently we've, the administration was doing a listening tour and there were a lot of positives that came out of that. And then there was some mixed reviews. So if you look at one side of the coin, you know, you're hearing from the union about the way that teachers are being treated or whatnot. But then on the other side, you're seeing from the administration, the other side of the coin, which the teachers are liking where they work. So, you know, I think for retention, it without a doubt starts with communication and it starts with collaboration and it starts with the leaders from the top down and the bottom up. So I think we do well. I think there's a bright future for retention going forward.
This is a really good question. As an HR professional, one of the things that I ask myself is why are we losing teachers? And so what I did is I look back at some of the CEA surveys of some of those accident reviews. And there were some glaring themes for me and one of the biggest things was resources. These teachers need resources to be able to do their job and to be able to create a foundation for our students. The other thing that I noticed is they want to feel valued. They want to be heard. They want to be collaborated with. Some of those teachers that left, they weren't feeling that. And so I think that's something that we need to listen to a little bit further and understand. The other thing that they need is mentorship and development. They need support. And so a lot of these teachers did leave us for that reason. So I think we need to kind of hone in on some of the things that we've already been told and figure out solutions to help so that we can retain more teachers. Thank you.
We can support retention of quality educators by making sure that they feel respected and valued. And being respected and valued, you know, that means resolving the pay inequity issues such as the one that Andy mentioned a few minutes ago. Making sure that our overall pay schedule is competitive with surrounding districts where many of the teachers reside and are looking at opportunities. It means that we need to reduce the morning administrative meetings that are sometimes perfunctory or necessary and interrupt the teacher's ability to prepare for their day with the students. We need to incorporate their input in significant decisions around how the district will be operated. And we need to reduce the student-teacher ratios and increase the special ed teachers to alleviate the burden that they have every day. Beyond that, we need independent surveys on teacher sentiment on a regular basis so that we're getting the information directly from the source and we need to invest in professional development.
Okay. What are your thoughts on the fiscal strength of the district? How do you think the district should prioritize spending? For example, should a parking lot be considered? Start with you, candidate Afif.
So I think that we have serious needs in terms of infrastructure and we have needs in terms of teachers and sped in special education. We have needs in terms of the gifted program. And all of these things need to be, they're all important, but we've got to find a way to balance how we're going to spend finite dollars to achieve the best outcomes and equity in all of those areas. And that is something that we need to work on collectively to figure out where those dollars need to be spent. A lot of times people come to us as a Board and say, this is really important to me and I respect that. And others will come and say, this is really important to me and I respect that. The challenge is to find a way to balance those things one against the other.
Thank you. I agree with the need for balancing all of our needs and putting a plan forward. Just a couple of thoughts in this regard. You asked specifically about a parking lot. I assume.
This is an example.
An example. So parking lot at, here at CHS, that's something we did get soil borings for. The district got soil borings for. It does appear that that is a feasible proposition and it is worth looking into to see what those costs would be and what exactly is needed and the benefits that would give us. You know, it is very difficult for those of us who have been watching the last 24 months and seen a $5 million land purchase and $4 million in architectural services to believe that there may not be any other money left for those kinds of needs. So looking at a balance, making sure the Board understands what funds are available and just making good decisions will be very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
So one thing that I think is option is, you know, I'm not in favor of putting a new parking lot at CHS. I am in favor of investing in our kids. I think that, you know, as one of the members on this panel said, you know, purchasing a new property, that was the right decision at the time. And I think going forward, it's going to continue to be the right decision because it will give us the ability to put buildings in the middle of our district. It also will correct and put forth better facilities for all of our kids and rightsize the district. But I believe in, you know, spending it on the kids and I certainly don't believe in spending it on a new parking lot. We pay for buses and buses are fine to transport the kids.
Thank you. I think that we need to prioritize, there's a lot of needs. And I think what we need to figure out is what we can tackle. There's a very long list. I understand your sentiments on the parking lot, but I really think right now, we really need to figure out our space. And we have a lot of students. We have a lot of new land development. We have a lot, we're running out of space. We've got mobile units at all the different schools and that's not the answer. It is more mobile units. And so I think we're going to have to sit together, not just as a Board, but as a school community and as the broader 301 community, to figure out what makes sense and how to prioritize so that we can provide things for across all the district, not just necessarily the high school. Because the space issue is global, right? It's not just in one area. And so I think we need to be a little bit more selective of what we're going to put our money towards so that we can help with some of these issues. Thank you.
So our district is relatively well-funded. It's better funded than many districts in the surrounding Chicago area. We have a low reliance on federal funding and we had enough money to finance the construction of the 20 classroom addition in this building, Central High School, without a referendum. We also had, as Andy mentioned, $4 million to $5 million, so a total of $9 million to spend towards building a new high school without that being authorized, which means that the money came out of the operating fund. Now, I think that there are two areas where we should redirect the investment. One is in the facilities and in particular, we have the most pressure in the elementary schools right now and that's where it's going to get worse in the next few years. So we need more classroom space for those kids and get them out of mobile units. And then secondly, we need to invest in more headcount, more teaching headcount. We need to bring down the student-teacher ratios, which is going to support better academic outcomes in the long run and it's going to reduce the attrition. Now, so those are my main two points. I also think we need to take a close look at why we continue to exceed the PTO cap and see if there are ways to finance the operations without growing the tax rate at a higher rate than inflation.
I liked a lot of what my colleague said. I think that it comes down to we have to work together as a community, as a Board, whoever's elected, and not to sound like a broken record, but I think we need to go back to the people that have the most knowledge based on what our biggest problems are in the schools and that's our teachers and our administration, to ask them to come together collectively with us to, like my colleague says, prioritize what our greatest needs are. And we've heard a lot of the needs that I think all of us have heard over the last couple of years. Space is one, special education is another, parking space is one. And I think what we have to do, because we don't have unlimited funds, we have to come together as a community, as a Board, as teachers and even some of our students maybe, and listen to them, hear what their top priorities are, the things that they really need, and then come together and set goals in place to tackle those financial needs and prioritize those.
Thank you. Starting with candidate Dogan. Are there steps or programs that you support to address mental health issues in the district's schools?
Absolutely. This is a great question and I think our, in general, our children have more stresses and more external influences competing for their time and attention than they ever had. We have so many two-parent families in our, two working parent families in our district who are not home as much. And that, while that doesn't necessarily, I would say, connect with any sort of mental health concerns, we are seeing a rise in the need for social support. So we need to support our social workers, our school psychiatrists, and make sure that we continue to allocate resources to those individuals to support the mental health of our students.
Thank you. You know, we do have resources at the school that help with that, but it also starts in the house. And I think that parents, that's their job to be on the lookout for any things that are happening with the children. I certainly think that our resources within the school though are excellent and people just need to come forward. So that's what I have to say on that.
Thank you.
I would definitely say this is kind of near and dear to my heart. As an HR professional, I deal with this daily. I would say when it comes to the social workers in our schools, they're inundated. Since COVID, a lot of our students are struggling and honestly, some of our educators are struggling. Recently, I asked what sort of, you know, remedies or measures do we have for our educators and staff? And we don't have as many as we could. So I definitely think there's some opportunities there to be able to help and support our educators and staff as well as try to help some of those social workers within our schools to help to combat and help our students. I think there could be more development and learning. This is something that is going to probably just continue to happen for us. And so we need to make sure that we've got those resources in place to help not only our students, but our educators, admin, and staff as well.
I have four thoughts on the question. The first one is that we need more effective methods for social emotional learning, starting in elementary school. The second is that we need to make sure that there's parental engagement and communication with parents before things become significant issues. The third is that we need to review the staffing needs and resourcing in this area, not only for the teachers in the classroom, but the other people that support in the staff. And then fourth, we need to publicize the other community resources that are available, the local organizations that can help in these areas. It's not only the school district. It's not only the parents, but there are a variety of things in the county that are available to help with these types of issues.
Such an important issue. And I think, and I'll just say this, I think that our teachers already do such an amazing job with our students. I've had three kids in the schools, excuse me, and all three of them have had different struggles throughout the years and the teachers have made all the difference for them during those times. So I think they do a tremendous job with what they have, but I do think that they are completely inundated with, or not just regular teaching, regular classroom activities, but also. But also dealing with special needs or mental health issues. And I think that we need to, again, come beside them and support them and ask what they need and listen to them and truly listen to them because they're the ones they spend... Yes, I do agree that parents need to be involved, but teachers spend more time with my kids on a daily basis during the week than I get to. And so they have a really good gauge as to what my kids are struggling with in the schools and I think we need to support them.
This is an issue of equity. It's something that we sometimes think of as a bad word, but at the end of the day, we have this group of kids that go to our schools and different kids come into our school buildings with different needs. And if we're going to ensure that each of the kids that we are educating are able to go through this process and come out at the other end ready to go into the job, in the workforce, go into the military, go on to college, whatever, then we need to make sure that they're getting what they need in order to achieve and that's an issue of equity. And so, yes, families are absolutely critical. Yes, there are resources outside of the schools. But for anybody who knows about mental health issues, the resources that are outside the school are overtaxed. There are long waiting lists. So we have to address that issue here because it's, again, a matter of equity.
Starting with candidate Falk. Looking at the Illinois State Board of Education report card, 61% read at grade level and 41% are at math level. This doesn't look like success. How can it improve? I'm assuming this is for this district? Yes? Okay. Candidate Falk.
Well, you know, we are consistently improving on giving the teachers the resources that they need in order to do that. We consistently are looking at the curriculum. And with those two and the input of the faculty to the administration, we believe that we will move our numbers forward. And I think that that's, you know, a good start, so.
Thank you. Yes, could we improve our reading and our math scores? Absolutely. I think what we are going to need to do is look at what type of resources our students need in order to do that, what type of resources our educators need to help with that. I think that, you know, the fact that, you know, we recently did put some math textbooks into the high school was paramount, but I think we need to support that with additional mentoring and support for those students that may be having some of those low test scores. I think we need to have more resources outside of the classroom to be able to help with this, whether it's from the math sector or in the reading. It's unfortunate that these are our scores, but we can do a better job with providing more resources for our students and our staff to kind of help with this.
You asked about the level of reading and math proficiency in the district. Now I'd add to that, the science proficiency also is lagging behind surrounding districts. But let's start with reading and math as the first two things. We need to strengthen the core curriculum at all grade levels. Our math curriculum has actually resulted Our math curriculum has actually resulted in proficiency scores declining over the past few years. We need to provide more intervention supports for the kids that are performing below their grade level. We currently have a year-round reading intervention program, but we don't have a robust math intervention program, and that correlates to the declining scores. The special ed kids aren't necessarily getting intervention. And also, we are holding back the advanced learners in our district in K through 8. They're forced to go through the regular curriculum as opposed to being able to proceed at their level of capability. And I think that philosophically is something we need to change in the district to result in better outcomes.
One thing I've learned, being a dad and a youth coach, is that every kid is different. They all learn differently. They handle instruction differently. Some advance a little bit quicker and then slow down, some are slow to start and then take off. And I think, going back to what my colleague said about equity, if our teachers have so many kids in the classroom that they can't dedicate specific time to the kids that might need a little extra help, or if we don't have programs where kids who are struggling or falling behind can't get a little extra help on the side, then we're going to see deficiencies in some of those areas. And I think, you know, I feel like I'm saying the exact same thing over and over again, but I think we go back to our teachers and we say, hey, how do we support these kids that are struggling in the classrooms? And what do we need to give them, or what do we need to give the teachers, what resources or support do we have to give you so that you can help those students that are struggling? So you can come alongside them, meet them where they're at, and set them up for the same success as the other students in the district.
I 100% agree with what Ryan said in terms of getting those resources, because every student does learn differently and has different needs. I have seen in the 12 years that I've been in this district, through my kids and their friends, with the same math, reading, and science curriculum, you have some children that are excelling. I mean, they are, you know, doing excellent. And then you have some kids that are really struggling. And one thing that I've observed anecdotally is this, that where some kids are able to go outside of the school and get the extra help that they need, they can make up the difference in their particular needs and build on that and succeed. But not every student has that ability. And again, that comes down to equity. We need to be doing that in our schools so that it's not just the kids with the resources that can make up the difference. And at the end of the day, it's got to be our teachers that are telling us what we need to do to fix that.
Thank you. You know, one of the words that we always hear around addressing potential solutions to address sort of flagging test scores is individualized, the word "individualized" or "individualization." So as my colleagues here on the panel said, meeting students where they're at. This really, as many of us have said, comes all, comes down to providing resources and support. Resources for our students both in the classroom and outside of the classroom to supplement what their families may be able to help them with, and resources and support for our teachers in terms of a consistent curriculum that is not constantly in flux, and support to make sure they have all the tools they need to take on a growing caseload, to make sure that our students receive that individualized instruction to meet them where they are.
Thank you. Starting with candidate Hemphill. Is the district doing enough to conserve energy, reduce waste, and promote sustainability?
I would say yes. I don't have any evidence that we aren't. I would say that we are definitely in line with what the state regulations and standards are around that. I don't have anything to base that we're not, so honestly, I would say yes.
One way or another, we're looking over the next several years of either building additions onto existing schools or building some new school somewhere at some level. And when we take on those projects, I think that we should make a concerted effort to incorporate sustainable design principles that will lower the energy consumption need and improve longevity of the buildings.
So there's a lot I don't know. I'm still learning. I don't know if the district's doing everything that it can. I think it's extremely important, though, for board members, future board members, to look at how the district handles things like energy, and if we're being efficient and if we're, you know, because if we're spending, or overspending, or we're wasteful on some of these things, that's money that we're not putting into the kids that should be going there. So I think it's an extremely important topic.
These are issues that we do discuss, and these are issues that we do address within the school district now. With the need for more space, with aging buildings, and adding new infrastructure, this needs to continue to be a priority as part of the planning when you are expanding or building new facilities. So yes, it's something that we are addressing now, and it's something that we need to continue to be cognizant of and vigilant about so that we can continue to improve on these areas.
I know as an architect that works on public facilities that there is a certain degree of environmental sustainability and energy efficiency that is required just to get a permit for a building, and I do know that the district is doing that in its recent projects. Having said that, I think in the future, to address our future space needs and for the infrastructure work that we know is coming, to address our space shortages, I think we can go much further. I think we can look at ways to not only promote energy efficiency, but also use these new building projects, these new schools, these new additions, whatever they may be, as vehicles not only to save energy, but to educate our students on the value of being good stewards of our environment. And I think our, these projects and these new things that are built can also be sustainable in the sense of enhancing student outcomes and quality of life.
Thank you. Yes, we are doing everything we can. We maintain our buildings, albeit they are starting to get old, but we do have a maintenance plan, and we are maintaining them the best we can. As far as, you know, the future construction, obviously, we're going to look to do the leads and different investments in that, but that costs money to do that and adds value. So, but currently, yes, we are doing everything within the power.
Now you're up. What, specifically, what do you view as the role of the board regarding classroom curriculum, books, and other educational resources in the district?
Oh, it's the board's role to set the priorities for the administration, to provide perspective on the direction it wants to go, and to evaluate the performance of the administration. So the board's role is really in oversight and to ensure that the resources are in place, that the curriculum is strong, that it's achieving the educational outcomes that were set for the district, and that all those things are working together to achieve good outcomes.
I think the board is ultimately accountable for how they support the educators and the teachers, but also how they work with the community and serve the community. It's our job, it's the board's job, and if I'm elected as board member, it'd be my job to serve and to ensure that what the community is asking is actually being held to in the classroom. So as far as curriculum goes, the board needs to support the teachers, again, make sure they have the resources that they need to provide the proper curriculum in the classrooms, and then also be able to have an open dialogue with the community if there's issues, and the community has issues with any other curriculum, or they can come and speak with board members and board members can address that.
With curriculum, in the state of Illinois, a large part of the curriculum is dictated by statute, by the legislature and the governor. So what you have is an extensive set of requirements that state law sets forth on what the curriculum should be. Now, there is a role for parents and family members to play as well in terms of how that state-mandated curriculum is implemented within our schools, and they have a role to play as well. And then you have the teachers and the administrators that have to take that state law, take that feedback from the community, and actually craft what the curriculum is going to look like. And the board responsibility is then to maintain oversight, to ensure that that community input is there, but that the regulatory requirements, the state requirements, are being met, and approve the curriculum based on those factors.
Such an excellent point by my colleague to mention that so much of our curriculum is driven by requirements at the state level. So we certainly have to honor those. As my colleagues have also said, it is also our job as board members to have the pulse of the community. We were elected by the board to be the community's voice. We need to make sure that the community's priorities, to the extent it's compatible with the laws we have to follow, are implemented by our staff, our superintendent, and our teachers in the classroom.
Yes, thank you. We follow the government mandates, but also, that's, you know, I'm in finance, but we also hire people in administration and curriculum and all that to monitor, to make sure that we're following the guidance. So I lean on the professionals to make sure that we're facilitating that, and then also ask the questions, you know, to seek to understand what we could be doing better. But we definitely have to follow state and federal.
I would definitely echo that. I mean, as we mentioned previously, the board does set the policies and procedures, and then holds the superintendent accountable to those things. As we look at curriculum and as we look at our test scores, if we find that there are things that maybe just are not working, or something's not right, then I think it's on the board to then start asking more questions. What can we do differently? What are the things that are needed? Speaking with the educators to understand what that looks like. But aside from just, you know, what we set as those policy and procedures, that is the act of the board, but I think we do need to ask more questions, just to make sure that our students are getting what they need.
A lot of that, Ryan. Many Americans are concerned about our children being indoctrinated with values that are not our own. And academics alone should be taught. What are your thoughts on this?
I think in any setting of education, whether it's in a classroom or whether it's coaching sports on a field, you're going to get more than, from the teacher or from the coach, you're going to get more than just strictly education. You're going to get values that those teachers or those coaches have, and they're going to attempt to instill those values in the kids. A lot of what I've experienced in our school district with our teachers is that the values that they're instilling in my kids are the same values that I uphold at my house. They're teaching my kids to respect other students, to respect their dignity, to treat everybody as equals, and those are values that I uphold as well. And I think if you take that out, you almost, and you're just focusing on simple education, you almost make it a bit robotic. And I don't know that we can ask our teachers to remove their values when they're teaching our kids educational ideals.
In addition to what Ryan said, I don't believe that we are indoctrinating our children. What we're doing is we are teaching them facts. When I think about the things that my four kids came home and learned about American history, about the people that live in their community that don't look like them, don't identify like them, they are getting the knowledge that they need to actually survive in this diverse society that we live in. Teaching kids about, in the high school level, Black Wall Street and the massacre is not indoctrination, it's not hate, it's a fact that they need to know about so that they can better understand and have a fulsome understanding of where we've been so that where we go can be better.
Thank you. We're definitely getting into some words and terminology that can be really loaded and can almost have a gotcha response, no matter of what your response is. So I will say this. I think it's impossible to completely divorce values from our children's education because our, simply because our students and our children are modeling the virtues and values that they are seeing in their schools. So I absolutely believe, I believe currently, that our teachers are setting wonderful examples of positivity, of kindness. We see that, I've seen that in every teacher my student has had. And when I think of the values that we want to see in schools, it's about how those teachers show up and model good behavior and being a good citizen for our kids. Thank you.
Again, I'm going to say that, you know, everything starts at the home. So the home and the teachers collaborate. You know, in our house, we talk a lot about this, and history is important to know where we've been so we know where we're going. I don't disagree with that. But no, I think it starts at the home and it just goes into the classroom as well. So.
I don't disagree. I think that what we're trying to do with our educators is make sure that we're instilling respect, collaboration, and fairness within our schools and within our classrooms. As I've sat in some of those classrooms and seen some of what our educators are doing firsthand, that's some of the values that I'm seeing. I'm not necessarily seeing indoctrination of their certain values. I think overall, they're wanting our students to think more globally, and above all else, is just have respect for one another and the values that they may be coming into the classroom with from their own homes. And so I would just say that we should probably continue to support our teachers in that. Thank you.
It's important that, as a district, that we provide not only high-quality academic education, but that we also prepare our kids for whatever they want to do next in life, whether that's go to college or join the workforce. And also to prepare them to be good citizens, good citizens. And so I think the role of the school district is to help instill American values. It's to instill a sense of ethics, empathy, openness, and respect, teamwork, resilience to adversity. They're all going to face adversity at some point in life. And I think also, very importantly, to teach the kids in a way that instills in them a lifelong love of learning.
Starting with candidate Fiv. If the federal government gets rid of the Department of Education, what will the Board of Education do to help protect our most fragile students and services they are providing?
So the good thing-
Got a magic wand? Got a magic wand?
The good thing is that so much of what happens in our schools is dictated by local government, by the state government. So a lot of our curriculum, a lot of our requirements that protect our most vulnerable students and every other student is based on state law. Now, what the federal government does is, through the Department of Education, largely, it serves as a clearinghouse for civil rights violations, it provides funding. So if we get rid of the Department of Education, then that funding is going to be limited, potentially, and that's going to be a challenge to the most at-risk in our community. And that's going to be something that we're going to have to grapple with, not just in education, but with our elderly, with our food insecure, our homeless. So if we go down that path, we've got very big issues to deal with.
Thank you. I do share my colleague's concerns about the potential unintended impacts of such a move if were to happen, particularly with regard to funding for our most vulnerable learners. I think that we need, fortunately, at the state level and here at the local level, I think we do have strong protections in place to maintain the quality of education, the quality of a good public education for all of our students, but particularly our most vulnerable. And I would certainly hope in this situation that that would continue, given that strength in our state. in our state.
That's a great question. I think one of the things that's going to have to happen is, not only the state, but the school district, as well as the family unit, will have to all come together to evaluate and seek to understand what the best options are at that point. So I think it's just going to come down to, you know, local, and we do a really great job with that.
Thank you. I think this is definitely a deep concern of all of ours, as we don't necessarily know where we're headed with some of this. I would definitely say that we do have a very strong state-level government, and so I feel like we will have some protections in place there. I don't disagree that moving forward with some of these decisions that are made at the federal level, we will have to collaborate as a community to better understand how we can help to protect some of our students that are at risk, since we may not have some of that federal funding going forward. So I definitely think there's going to have to be some collaboration going forward amongst all of us.
As I mentioned earlier, we, as a district, receive only a very small percentage of our funding from federal sources. That funding is to offer programs for some of the most vulnerable students, and if that funding is disrupted, we'll have to find other ways to finance that from the operating budget. But our district, in comparison to other districts in the state, is in a much stronger position because of the very small percentage that it comprises. Mostly, we're funded from our real estate tax dollars, and most of the remaining funding is from state sources, and that's what puts us in a stronger financial position. I think the more significant concern is that Department of Education plays a role in oversight and enforcement of the protections for those vulnerable populations, and if they no longer do that, if there's not a federal agency that takes up the mandate of those federal laws, then I think it's likely that the state of Illinois will do that. We already have interstate protections that exceed the federal standards, and I fully expect the state will step in and kind of supply what the federal does.
So I'll echo some of the sentiments of my colleagues up here. Ultimately, I think the fear is that we don't control what the federal government does right now. We don't control what they do. What we do control is what we can do in our own community. I think as parents, as community members, as members of this district, as members of Central, I have seen this community come together during times of crisis, and I have full faith that as a community, if something like this happens where our most vulnerable are in any form of danger from getting funding taken away or anything else, this community will come together. We have to, and we do have to collaborate, we have to work together, because ultimately, we're all here for the students. We want all the students to succeed, to grow up and be successful regardless of their situation.
Thank you. Thank you. Last question, starting with Mr. Dogen. In that there- In that there have been very public disagreements between the board in the last few months, how will you work with other board members, particularly those you might disagree with, to drive forward solutions and improvements for the districts?
That's a great question. I would start answering that question by saying that I believe we all have two ears in one mouth, rather, for a purpose, and that they should be used in that proportion. I think we need to better listen to one another, we need to understand. You know, we are seven individuals at the end of the day who cannot possibly agree on every subject, but what we can do is approach each other from a place of mutual respect and genuine curiosity about where they're coming from, and consider those perspectives as we make our individual votes. And after we make those votes, whatever that vote or that outcome may be, we continue to move forward and present a sense of solidarity to our students, to our teachers, and to our community.
I think it starts with a firm resolve. You know, I think trust and firm resolve, as well as hearing what the other board members are, but also seeking the truth as to what both sides are there in making an educated decision as you move forward. So I think trust is a big thing and staying firm in your resolve.
Thank you. Personally, I think that some disagreement amongst the board is not a bad thing. I think it challenges us. I will say that, you know, we've been told in the past that we always seem to agree on everything, and that we don't. But I think that it's good, especially with us coming from different backgrounds, we're going to have some dissent, we're going to have some disagreement, and I think it's healthy. It challenges me to think differently than where I'm coming from, to hear what other board members have to say, there are different opinions than my own. I definitely think that we need to collaborate more and listen to each other along with that, and obviously have a deep respect and trust for that. But I definitely do say, you know, we're not going to always agree on different things of the board, but I think that's good, right? Because again, that challenges us to think outside the box and think differently than where we're coming from. And so if anything on this new board, I hope that there is more of that in the sense of just asking each other more questions and not necessarily going with, you know, the yes vote.
I agree that various perspectives are beneficial to improve each other's understanding, the impact of decisions that we might make, to improve each other's ideas, and to make prudent decisions. The board does not need to have consensus. A board with full consensus is probably not having effective discussions. But the board does need to abide by decisions made by the majority. So I think the role of the board is to have those discussions, and at the end, if there's still disagreement, that's okay, but you have to commit to the decision of the majority.
Got to echo some of the things that my colleague said. I think it comes down to respect, respect for your colleagues, respect for other board members, understanding that everybody that wants to be a part of this is here for the kids. The goal is to do everything that we can to support them and to do what's best for our kids. But to have respect for other board members, for other perspectives, for other backgrounds, for other cultures, when we come together to be able to listen to, not just hear what they're saying, but actually listen to what they're saying, why they're saying it, and come to either a mutual agreement, or, like my colleague said, sometimes it's okay to have a disagreement and to agree to disagree. But I think that we have to be respectful of each other, we have to, and we have to work together ultimately, because if there's fighting amongst the board, the kids aren't winning.
The important thing is for the board to collaborate with each other and to work based on facts and follow rules and policies and laws. And if we can do that, then we can put personalities aside, because it's not about maintaining cohesion of the board, it's about collaboration. And when you see the rules are broken, or when you see that something is not being done right, it's collusion to just gloss over it and not address it. So it's important for us going forward to focus on facts and issues and not individual personalities, and make our decisions based on what's best for the kids and for the district.
Thank you. All the way to the other end. We'll start our closing. Have you ever been in a jury, on a jury? I mean, that's really kind of rough, and they all have to come to an agreement. You guys can at least talk about things and vote on things, so I think that's awesome. We'll start with candidate Bach, and you get up to two minutes.
Thank you. Over the past year, we've witnessed deliberate effort by groups driven by conflicts of interest and intent to fracture our district through spread of misinformation. This distorted narrative built on half-truths and self-serving agendas was crafted to undermine truly what serves the best interests of our students and our community. Tonight, not different from over the past several months, we've endured relentless negativity. This is not a way to achieve meaningful change, the focus on negativity, not the progress, solutions, and best interests of our students. Instead, it's driven a perceived sense of power, self-interests, and blatant efforts to dismantle the very system that has made this district a model of excellence, one that many of us strive to be a part of. It has been my honor to serve as a volunteer in this district. However, let me be clear, I will not serve another term alongside those who determine to dismantle everything we've worked so hard to build. In the past, despite our differences, there was a spirit of collaboration, mutual respect that led through thoughtful decisions and meaningful progress. Sadly, with the current board, there is no spirit, no longer seems to exist. Greed and desperate need to cling on to the power systematically destroying opportunities for the future collaboration. If this leadership falls into the hands of those that are oblivious to the demands over the well-being of Community Central School District 301, we will lose what has made this district a true community. 301 deserves better leaders committed to our students, not to prioritizing politics and personal agendas. The consequences of the false misleading agendas are very clear. With the resignation of our superintendent and taxpayers, we will now face financial burden of replacing a vital leader who has had over 20-plus years of experience in investing in our students' future. The future of our children and the students is far too important to let this unchecked path continue. The way forward lies understanding, respecting-
Thank you, candidate Bach. You've gone over two minutes. Candidate Hampil.
Thank you. I am committed to ensuring that our schools provide the best possible education and opportunities for all students. As a dedicated advocate for our community, I believe in fostering collaboration and strategic decision-making to support students, teachers, and families. If reelected, my four years of board expertise will help to support and lead the new board as we continue to drive positive change for our districts. District, thank you.
This is a very important school board election. We have the opportunity in front of us to change the direction of our district and to move it forward towards being the best school district in Kane County. And we're fortunate to have 11 candidates for four roles. I mean, when is the last time that happened? You know, what I want to bring to the board, and what I hope everyone who's elected to the board brings, is the right tone from the top, a tone that's committed to ethical and professional governance and fiscal responsibility, doing the right things in the right way, and respecting the rights of our students and the community. I would like every board member to be focused on improving academic outcomes, and that means strengthening our curriculum, getting those student-teacher ratios in line, putting the things in place that we need to really help our kids achieve their potential. And I also think that it's important for every new board member to bring an open mindset, an openness to integrating other people's ideas and improving their own ideas, and to act with a sense of urgency. I sure hope we're not sitting here a year from now talking about, you know, kids in mobile units and teachers being dissatisfied and having the lowest retention in the county. I think we need to bring a sense of urgency to act on the issues that we're facing. Thank you.
First, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on, for the very tough questions that you asked us. And a huge thank you to all of you for coming here and also asking some very tough questions. I'm not a politician, I do not have the answers to all the questions, but I really want to serve the community and the kids and work with all of you to find all the answers to the questions and to make the school district the best it absolutely can be.
There's no power on the board. The board members have the same amount of power and get the same benefit that I got when I was coaching my sons at the Rocket Wrestling Club, or that you get when you serve on the PTO, or that you get when you volunteer with the boosters. We don't get paid for this work. We do it because we have a passion for the community. We do it because we care about the community that we live in, we want to see our kids do well, we want to see our kids in the community do well, because at the end of the day, our kids will succeed if everybody around them succeeds, and that's why we do this work. In this past four years, I've tried to serve with honor and with distinction and with a commitment to doing the right thing, even if it's hard. And because I don't believe in quitting, I stepped up and sought reelection. Now, I've gotten a chance to know my opponent very well over the past several, let's say, year and a half, and I have a great deal of respect for him. So the good news for the community is that I think you have a win either way, and I have a great deal of respect for what Andy brings to the table and to the board. I will say that what I'm offering is an opportunity to create continuity as we go into the new board, plus my legal expertise, which has proven to be invaluable in the past several months as we clean house, and it will be necessary for us to make the next evolution as a school district over the next two years.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you all for coming out tonight and for supporting and listening to all of us. I too want to pat my opponent, Mr. Afif, on the back. He and some other members of this board have done some really, really hard and, I would say, courageous things over the last few months. And for those of you who have been looking for change in our district, we owe a great deal of that to them. I agree with Mr. Afif. I would like to think there isn't a bad choice that you can make for this two-year seat. What I can say is that I am committed to moving the district forward, and I am committed to moving the district forward together with our students, our teachers, our parents, to listen to as many perspectives as we can, to come into that room and vote on behalf of everybody that I, as a potential board member, not only represent but serve. It's my belief that it is so important to serve our community in this role and to put interests of our students above our own, and I, again, really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to say that I moderate school board candidate forums all over northern Illinois, and you guys have been very well behaved, which is always good. And it's always interesting, because you hear that, talk about class sizes and talk about resources and talk about the same things, district to district to district. So you need to know you're not in it alone, although I will say, my daughter teaches in Chicago kindergarten, full day, and had 37 children, full-day kindergarten with no aid, and they speak 14 languages in her classroom, 40 in her school. So what she gets for Christmas is cases of copy paper because she can't afford to get workbooks for her kids. So think about that. But you all have been a joy to deal with tonight, and so I want to say, give them a round of applause. Thank you very much. For more information, please visit the nonpartisan voter guide, illinoisvoterguide.org, as well as the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County and Elgin area websites. Your participation as a candidate and as a voter is essential to preserving the democracy we hold dear. Please remember to vote on or before April 1st, as one vote can decide the election, and that one vote can be yours. Thank you very much.